I now call to order this December 6th, Friendswood City Council Meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Invocation will be given by Pastor Justin Baldwin of the Harbor Church. Please stand and remain standing for the invocation and then we're going to say the pledges.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Maybe I'll just talk loudly. Talk them to see children here tonight. Let's pray together. Father God, we just bring ourselves before you. Thank you, God, for this Christmas season where you set your son for us and we celebrate that wonderful gift. Lord, we just want to bring this meeting tonight before you and ask that it would be pleasing to you, Father. Lord, we know you love us and you care for us and you want us to come to you when we need wisdom. So we bring ourselves before you and we bring this council before you and we just ask that your will be done in this, in this community, Lord. Father, you say in Hebrews that we can come straight into your throne room, God, and be with you. So we just pray, God, that you would come be among us tonight. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thanks Pastor, appreciate it. I want you all to see that I have a script, just like you do. Doesn't say the same thing as yours. All right, item four is communications from mayor and council members. What if we start down there on the end with Councilmember Steve Rocky?
Two things from the library. The annual book sale will be December 11th through the 15th. You can get a bag of books for $5 and a box of books for $10. It's a great deal. And then, second of all, if, if you are somebody that needs help, the library does deliver books and so all you have to do is call the library and ask them and they will bring something by. And I want to make a comment. I, I was out Saturday on my motor scooter going around and the flapjack run was going on in the park and the park looked spectacular and there was a farmer's market going on and Mary Queen was having their, 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 their thing and of course Santa in the Park in the evening was spectacular and then seeing all these kids here today and I was reminded of the old Kurt Vonnegut quote, "If this isn't nice, what is?" So.
Thank you Steve. Councilmember Sally Branson.
So thank you. I'll just give you a quick update on CEDC. They had a retreat this week. I think it went extremely well. They're going to have a follow-up in January, but I'm very, very excited about what's happening with CEDC and I want to do a shout-out to Ron Cox, who is a facilitator by training and he is a citizen of Friendswood, has volunteered his time and he is doing this retreat at no cost to the city of Friendswood. That's a very huge Christmas gift from Ron's. I just wanted to say thank you for that and I too would like to say that the park was absolutely spectacular. I'm so glad that we've got the lights in the park back again this year. I know that was because of COVID, so it was kind of a sad reason that we had that, but wow, what a wonderful gift to our community, so thank you for doing that. And by the way, there will be a Christmas tree lighting at the Brown Museum tomorrow evening. We'll have a little children's choir and wassail and gingerbread, so if you haven't had enough Christmas yet, please come by the Brown Museum at 7:00 tomorrow evening for a tree, for our annual tree lighting.
Santa will be there.
Yeah, free photos with Santa.
Councilmember Hank.
I attended a workshop last Thursday night with planning and zoning. They had a great workshop. Those people are on top of it and they planned for many things to make our city run more smoothly in the planning department and the zoning area and they just had a great workshop and did some great, wrote some great goals. Also, the city does look great and if you need any more Christmas cheer, check the FISD, I'm sure the CCISD websites too. There are lots and lots of children, children's performances that will get you in the mood the next couple of weeks. And Merry Christmas to everyone.
Councilmember Robert Graffon.
Well, I sure do appreciate everybody here being here this evening. I was at the Santa in the Park this last weekend and it was awesome. We couldn't do it the year before. We only had the lighting in the park and just having everybody out there and then the fun that everybody was having, it was just a super awesome time. And I just might be remiss if I didn't mention this. I know Dax is going to be coming up here and sitting in my seat, but my city council position is going to be up for election this May and I'm just going to tell everybody right now, every time I'm out with the mayor and he gives a speech, he always says, "I love being mayor." Well, I don't really like doing the budgeting part of this job, but I do like being your council member. And I'd like to announce that I am going to run for reelection for a city council position for Dax. Great spot. Other than that, thanks for everybody coming out.
John Scott.
Don't really have anything to add much other than just to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe holiday and enjoy your, being with your families.
Councilmember Brent Aaronworth.
I just, I want to thank the Parks Recreation Department on everything for Santa in the Park, all the volunteers. Seems to be getting better and better each year and I guess since Robert broke the ice, I guess my chair is trying to kick me out this, next year too, but I want to stay sitting here as well, so I'm going to announce that I'll be rerunning again in May and hope to keep continuing to serve this city. It's been an honor.
I'll just say, you know, I'm excited that the two of you are planning to run again. Councilmember Graffon, you have been like a tremendous addition to city council since you've been serving for four years now and your help with the drainage and serving on representing us at the Drainage District is just, we couldn't ask for a better person to represent us there. You're so knowledgeable about that and you say you don't like the budget, but boy, you sure do look at it close. I, I actually have started to like the budgeting process, but it's good that we have council member like you that go into it, you know, with a fine-tooth comb and find where we can maybe improve on our budget. And I'll say the same for you, Councilmember Aaronworth. You've been a, a great addition to the city council and glad to have you back. I'm glad that you're running again. It would be good to continue to serve.
Thank you. It takes a couple of years to learn.
Yeah, I'm still trying to learn it. They, I'm not too smart, but I'm trainable. So, and I will finish off with a little bit on Santa in the Park. That was a tremendous event. I gotta give it up for Parks and Recreation, Assistant Manager Stephen Ray, Parks and Rec Director James Tony. Oh, if I, if I try to go down the list of all those folks that were involved, I'd get in trouble, but it was tremendous and our mayor pro tem, I was there for the kickoff, but then the mayor pro tem, Robert Graffon, actually jumped in and pinch-hit for me and he read the poem that we read every year and, you know, he had like three seconds notice that he was going to read the poem. So with, on a cold read, that was pretty good.
Well, I appreciate it.
I heard about it.
I found out he could read.
I, I took a chance and said...
I'm a product of our public education system here in FISD.
FISD. If any of his teachers...
Oh wait, I wasn't on. I'm a product of the public education system right here in Friendswood, so I'm very proud of that.
Is your second grade teacher here tonight?
No.
Just checking, I was just checking. All right, well, moving on. Y'all, we have kind of a structured agenda here that we follow and we're going to get to council for a day at item six. Item five though is public comment and I got to read a statement. In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to city management for further action, or two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall refrain from any outbursts or interjections, including but not limited to applause, disparaging noises, and remarks. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against the city employee, aside from the city manager, city attorney, or municipal judge, should not be discussed and shall be referred to city management. Oh, we got another card? Each speaker shall give his/her name for record-keeping purposes. Rules allow each speaker three minutes to present information. The time clock will flash a yellow light when there are 30 seconds remaining and on the allotted time, it'll flash a red light with electrical shock. When, when time has expired, please wrap up your comments at that time.
Said stuff here, huh? All right. I'll tell you, I've, I've done a little bit of public speaking, but I've never been as nervous as I am now with these youngsters right here. I am totally intimidated. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for your time and service to the community. My name's Kyle Winnie. I live in West Ranch with my wife and three young children and we recently moved there and we, I was doing some research on the commercial properties that are available in West Ranch and in that research, I contacted the Friendswood Development Company and I learned that there was a letter of intent for a gas station to go across from the new site for the Klein Elementary School. Well, I brought this up to our HOA and some residents were concerned about alcohol and tobacco sales across the street from the kids and it also spurred some conversation in regards to like the types of businesses that may be popping up for future developments with the properties. And I did take some time to look at the Alcohol and Beverage Ordinance 6.6 and I understand that three feet, or 300 feet is the required distance between alcohol sales for schools. I am curious as to how that is physically measured. I come from a law enforcement background, so I understand that there's some procedure there, but I don't want to get off on a tangent. I'm actually here in front of you guys for educational and informational purposes and maybe a future strategic resource. I'm currently gathering information from our residents, the development company, and I want to get some insight from the city council as to the complete vision for our neighborhood. And I've been in contact with, I want to understand what each group has envisioned so I can kind of relay that information to our residents, because after the meeting, I have residents that are offering up input and, you know, voicing their concerns and stuff and so I'm kind of serving as a liaison at this point. And so I wanted to ask you guys a few questions and I provided handouts. So you have a copy of what I'm getting ready to, to read as far as the questions and actually a dictation of everything I'm saying right now. So I'm just going to read through them and I'm going to yield my time and for your questions, comments, or guidance, okay? Question number one, does the city have any written documentation dealing, detailing the overall vision for the West Ranch community? I've spoken with Joe Matringa, I think he's here, I think. Hey Joe. I spoke with him as far as planning and zoning goes, so I understand the commercial development side and the way it's zoned out and stuff. I just didn't know if there was some more readily available information that kind of gives a, a more detailed picture than just that. Question number two, besides the school and proposed daycare site in, in that area, what projects are currently in the works for these properties? I know there may be some legal things you can and cannot say. Question number three, has the city conducted any resident, oh, has the city conducted any resident surveys? And I'll let y'all read and go ahead.
Thank you, sir. We can't interact with you because this item's not on our agenda tonight.
Okay.
But we, we've heard the issue and we'll, we are discussing it, so thank you very David Allen.
Glad to see so many students and parents here. I'm leaving, I just spent $40 on reproduction because there's several color copies in this and there's 10 out on the desk back there and I'll put this other 10 back there. You may be interested in it. David Allen, 214 Inwood. And also, all the students here, now, I'm pretty old, but even a 10-year-old and eight-year-old can come up here and speak to this government. We have the state government, we have the President of the United States, but your most important government is actually this that you're looking at right now. If you have a safe city, it's because of the Friendswood Police Department, not because of the FBI or something. The Friendswood Police keep this place safe. And also to the parents, look up the number of astronauts that...
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Would you mind addressing us?
Yes, okay. Look up the number of astronauts that live in Friendswood and you'll be amazed how close you are to one right now. That's all I want to say. But what, but the, the topic here is the new virus, okay, is Omicron. The president has called it Omnicron. I'll go one further and call it Omnikon. In other words, all-around con. If you respell the Omicron, it can be, make up the word moronic and we are if we let this thing shut down our family businesses again. So let's not have the shutdowns and panic we had over the first one. Recently, as of the last week or so, a federal court forced Pfizer to release the results of the first month of injections that occurred, ending February of 2021. And that's what's in the back pages of this document. The president also joked that Fauci is the real president when it comes to these vaccines and they're going to be manating them on schoolchildren next year. It was a joke, but this is not funny. When you have this data of what these vaccines, they killed 1,200 people, according to Pfizer. This is a formerly secret document, then forced out by the court. 1,226 people in February of this past, of this year. They're keeping this stuff under wraps. Documents are for your use out there. 20 copies for free. Last October 2020, this front document where they had about 20 illnesses that this vaccine causes, and these are lifelong illnesses, that was in an internal publication. You can look it up here online and they knew about this stuff before they even started this. So this is very important information to our entire community, especially the schools since they're going for the younger people to continue making their bucks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. Okay, moving on to item six, council for a day. I'm going to stand up here. I spoke for a couple of minutes before, but I just wanted to say again, welcome to city council chambers. We're so glad that you are here. We started this in 2018 and we've done it for three years now. This is the third school year that, we missed a, we missed a grade level, so those third graders this year didn't get to come last year because of COVID, but we did it for a number of reasons. You know, we want, we want these students to learn a little bit about how our government works and it's great that parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers and sisters. Speaking of brothers and sisters, any former council members out there? Do we have a former council member? Yes, yes, we have a former council member two years ago, right? You're in fourth grade now? That's awesome. Yes, I remember you from two years ago. We also want to understand the value of community service. You know, all of us up here are volunteers and so we are public servants. We give back to the community by serving in these positions and you just heard Robert Graffon and Brent Aaronworth talk about how they're going to run for reelection next year and that costs money, you know? We, we pay for yard signs when we run for reelection and, you know, the, the payback is zero because we get absolutely nothing. Maybe occasional Diet Coke before the meal here, before the meeting, but I know, I exaggerate, lady, I drink 100 Diet Cokes a day. We want to also, you know, we want to also foster leadership development with these young people. You know, you're looking at future leaders up here at the dais. These are future leaders of Friendswood, the state, federal government. These are, these are your future leaders up here and we also want to promote the, the school district's character education program. So, you know, all those things we do and we bring these folks up here and, you know, this isn't just 20 minutes of them being up here. They've, they've worked for a couple of weeks now rehearsing their lines and understanding exactly what part they're playing and so there's a lot going on. So I am going to sort of introduce them all. They're all here nicely. Thank you. So first, our city manager, Brynlee Livesay. And Brynlee, your teacher is Pam Cutts. Is she here? Thanks for being here. Second, our city attorney, person that keeps us out of trouble most of the time, tries, Aria Stevenson. And your teacher is Lauren Jones. Ms. Jones, thank you for being here. Let me see, now I'm going to run down here to council member position one, which sits right here. Yes. Grayson Miller. And your teacher is Ally Deaton. Is she here? No. Thank you for being here, Principal Moffett. Kristen Moffett's here. Assistant Principal Lee Whitlock is here. Thank you all for, for your involvement in this program. We really couldn't do it without your support, so thanks again for being here for a third year. Councilmember two, Drew Martinek. And Lexi Compton is your teacher, huh? Is Lexi here? Second timer, right? You did this a couple of years ago at least. You did. Is this your third time doing it or a second time? You've done all of them, okay. However many that is, you've done them all. Great. All right. Councilmember position three, Hudson Shields. Darian Register. Darian, thank you for being here. A rookie. This is your first time, huh?
It's my first time.
Yeah, you love it so far, right? Just a little bit of extra work, but, you know, we just pile the work on the teachers. Next, most important person here, Mayor Crawford Wells. And Jennifer Ellis, again, you're a repeat, all, all the time. Thank you for being back. Okay. You can see the introductions will take longer than their actual discussion up here, but council member position four, Dax Gutierrez. You're also the mayor pro tem. You know, if we follow that council member Graffon is our mayor pro tem. I was telling him earlier, mayor pro tem, that's Latin for mayor in case the real mayor gets hit by a bus. I'm staying out of the street so that council member Graffon doesn't have to step up. Teresa Waltonbaugh. And this is your, at least your second or third, at least. Thank you for coming back and continuing to, to help us. Michaela Ward is council member position five. Julie Delka. Julie here too? It's so wonderful that every teacher is here. That's impressive. I mean, I worry that all the students will come because what, we have this script and if we have a no-show student, what will we do? I have a gap in our script, but, but the teacher's coming to make sure and all the parents and grandparents, I'm sure we would never have anybody no-show us. Councilmember position six is Paige White. Kelly Rye. Is that, is that your teacher? She's not here?
She's got a sickness.
Oh, she's sick?
Her son is sick.
Oh, her son is sick, okay. I hope he gets better soon. And then, city secretary number one, Connor Weatherford. Is that you? Connor Weatherford. And your teacher is Leah Trahan. Trahan, is she here? No? City secretary number two, Kason Devers. Melissa Comer. Another repeat teacher. Thank you, Melissa. Thanks for being here. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to the city manager. Really, the most important person probably is the city manager. He makes everything happen here, he or she. So I'm going to turn it over to you and you can take it away.
I'm going to need you to speak straight into the microphone so everybody can hear Mayor and council, tonight you have before you a proposed resolution declaring December 13th, 2021, Westwood Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Westwood Elementary is part of the Friendswood Independent School District and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community.
Has our city attorney approved the wording of our proposed resolution? I have drafted the wording of the proposed resolution and it is in line with the vision statement of the city of Friendswood.
Will our city secretary please read the city's vision statement for the record?
The city council has promised to, 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 to,
We will be, we will be good citizens and do our share.
At Westwood Elementary, we will respect ourselves and others too.
We will expect the best in all we do.
Would the city secretary please read the motion on the table? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Motion and a pass is seven to zero. Congratulations, Westwood Elementary School. Council for a day meeting is now adjourned.
Great job, great job guys. Mayor, you could have voted for that too, you know, I think your vote was implied. All right, item seven, special recognition and acknowledgements prevent, present the city of Friendswood Five Star Spirit Awards for the third quarter of twenty twenty one to Santiago Aguillera, Ulojio Ortiz, Raul Ramos, and Jorge Renderos in the Public Works Department, as well as Jeff Spears in the Administrative Services Department.
Well, good evening, mayor and council. This is always my favorite time of the year. We do this four times a year and each time I tell you, it's a unique opportunity to present a single employee to you that's embodied the, the Five Star Spirit Award for the city of Friendswood. The five stars represent, and I apologize, I should have it memorized, but courtesy, competence, professionalism, enthusiasm, and reliability. This quarter is unique, as was last, but we have five people that are being recognized. The Five Star Spirit Committee is made up of representatives from each department and they're the ones that vote on nominations that are made by the public and/or by other staff members regarding an employee and the exemplary service that they provided the city of Friendswood. In our Public Works Department, Santiago and his crew did some work for an elderly handicap resident here in Friendswood. While they were working on a sidewalk leveling project, they realized that the homeowner had some difficulty traversing the terrain off of the public sidewalk onto the flatwork into their home. And while they were out there, they went ahead and took an extra step and made sure that any trip hazards, anything else were removed, going above and beyond what they're expected to do. Definitely above and beyond what the folks in, in the community think of when they think of city employees. Similarly, Jeff Spears, and as you know, a number of you, when you call me on the, on my cellphone, I have a tendency to pace around my office while talking to you to make sure that I'm giving you my undivided attention. And one of these occasions, I'm pacing my office while on the phone with, and I, and it wasn't y'all, it was Bob Wieners, our police chief. And you know, those can be long-winded conversations.
He's still in the lobby, you're.
Oh, still in the lobby, good. It is pouring down cats and dogs outside and who do I see in our parking lot in his office attire? Jeff Spears clearing the drain during work hours in the parking lot to ensure that there's no ponding or flooding issues in the parking lot. So the Five Star Spirit Committee couldn't make a choice between these five stellar nominations and they recommended all five employees be recognized for their service. So this evening, I asked that Santiago, Ulojio, Raul, come up, I know Jorge is out this afternoon, he's not feeling well, and Jeff Spears to come, come up here. So, thank you each of y'all for everything you do day in and day out. I know that this just pales in comparison to what y'all do every day, but we appreciate your continued commitment to our city. And if y'all have anything you'd like to share or introduce your family members, by all means, please do so.
No, I just want to say thank you for recognizing us, you know. We come here to see the Friendswood, we try our best to provide our best services and try to do the best we can. We appreciate it, I appreciate it.
I want to thank the city for allowing us to serve in this community. And I want to thank you for this award and thanks to our city manager and our director, Mr. Renee Iguara, for allowing us to work together.
Yeah, I wanted to say I really love working for the city and my director Katina is one of the best I've ever had. And I wanted to introduce my son Ryan and my other son Jesse. I made them come and I promised them free food. Free food, you can get a teenager to do whatever you want.
Y'all mind turning around for a picture?
Not at all.
We can get you in front, or I guess in front of the podium.
Congratulations, guys. Item eight, work session, receive and discuss an update regarding the capital improvement projects presented by Eldardo Adias.
Good evening, mayor and council. I was kind of hoping the city manager for the day would give me the rest of the night off on the way out, but that didn't happen, so. Instead, I'm here to give you an update on our CIP. You're going to notice a theme here. We are, we have been finishing up a lot of our ongoing projects that we've had here in the recent past. And we're kind of in the calm before the storm. Before we start up on a, our next round of really big CIP projects, we're going to start to see some flood control projects come online. And some other outstanding CIP that has been in the works for a while. The first thing I wanted to share with you is the lift station number twenty-three. That is, has been completed and it is in service, it's running great. We've had a couple pickups, but nothing that couldn't be resolved. So we're in the process of addressing some punch list items on this project and we're expecting to have the, the final acceptance on this project next month.
Great job on that.
Thank you.
Good to see those fences come down and that lift station back in service, it's been a while, hasn't it?
Thank you, yes.
We probably started working on that before you got here, so.
It, yes, it was a project that's been, was well underway by the time I got here, so.
Crazy horse.
Crazy horse, yes. Carries well over one-third, may, close to one-half of our raw sewage in town, so very important facility there. Second update I have is on the fire station number two reconstruction. We have our one-hundred percent construction documents that have been delivered. We're anticipating the guaranteed maximum price to be delivered to the city council next month at the next city council meeting. Quick update on that, the bid packet has been out by the submitted, or was released by the contractor. And they're expecting to receive those bids next week. And once they have those numbers, we'll get with them and go check their numbers and arrive at a guaranteed maximum price that we'll have for you next month. Is if everything, assuming everything goes right. Pretty much the same thing with the public safety building is expansion. They're actually going to be receiving their bids tomorrow, so we'll have a little bit of a head start with that project. This one, we will also be looking for a January twenty twenty-two delivery on the guaranteed maximum price. On the Blackhawk facility, the renovation and shelter. We have a initial layout that we've been working through with the architect BGAL. Our needs assessment has been completed based on feedback that they got from engineering, from Public Works, and from the Parks Department. As well as some of the other departments that office out of there that, in what exactly what the needs are going to be in. So we'll be trying to fast track that to have something, maybe be, be close to having the, the plans ready by the next time I give one of these quarterly updates. The next update is on the Friendswood Parkway, which is the old, going to be the old Friendswood Lake Boulevard. As you all can see there, we had our, our grand opening for that street. It is substantially complete and it's in service. We're working with the county right now with their contractor to address some odds and ends on that project. We're crossing our fingers that everything will be knocked out here within the next month on that project. Quick update on the twenty twenty-two asphalt street maintenance program. The bid documents are currently underway. The engineering department is working on that. Our aim is to have this out here pretty soon so that we can see a construction starting in the spring of twenty twenty-two. Would like to have that so that we can be ready to take advantage of the, the weather starting to get warm here in a couple of months. And lastly, just a couple of updates on TechStop projects. As you see, the curb ramp and curb and ramp project is ongoing. One thing I, I did want to mention, some people have asked about the, the brick border on the sidewalks. That's coming. It's just a, a matter of trade. You have concrete guys that specialize in concrete and we have a brick guys, bricklayers that will be coming after the fact to add the finishing touches to the sidewalks. The installation of traffic signals is going to be the, the next major thing that they'll be doing also. And speaking of traffic signals, you can see that the one at Leisure Lane has been installed. It's got some bags over the lights right now. They're waiting, TechStop has informed us that they're waiting on TNP to run some power over to it and they don't have a, a clear date on that yet, but they're trying to push TNP to get that going and as soon as they drop the power to that, they'll be coming online. And lastly, the FM five eighteen bridge out here in front of city hall. They are getting pretty close to finishing the side that they're working on right now. I noticed that they're, all the, the forms are up on the, on the barriers on the side. So they're a couple of weeks away from finishing that portion. And then once that happens, they'll be flipping over to the, to the other side to do similar work on the other side. When that's done, traffic will be rerouted to the, the other side of the bridge in similar fashion to what, what's going on out there right now. So that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy.
When will we be able to see the list of streets that'll be worked on in twenty twenty-two?
The list of streets is actually live right now, it's on the city website. And I'm more than happy to follow up and send you a link to that.
Hey, Hill, a great presentation, great job on the roads that we've done and the asphalt and that we've done, but what are we doing as far as scheduling for striping of those roads? We, we've done so good about getting these roads in place, but it just seems like we're not, we're not marking them.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, that is actually something that we are working through right now. We are going to have a striping contract. There are some streets that are in major need of re-striping. So that, that will be happening here pretty soon also.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
So, thank you. So I live over on that side of town with the, with the light, that's affected by the light at Leisure Lane. And I get a lot of questions about when that light's going to be operational. And I've told everybody it's a Texas, it's a TechStop issue, but I didn't realize it was Texas, New Mexico, that they were the ones that are kind of holding it up. Do we know anyone there that we could make a call to and speed that up?
We do and we will definitely do our part to help encourage that along. TechStop was the holdup for the longest time getting that signal started, so the, what you shared with your neighbors was not inaccurate. But we'll definitely make some calls and see what we can do to help.
Right. She, she had one of my question, I get, I get the same questions on that one, it's, I mean, you think a couple of months, is it safe to say on that, or?
Uh, on the.
That light being turned on, ninety days?
You know, I, I have a, I'm waiting an answer for, on that from our now interim area engineer with TechStop, Jamal. He's taking over for Southeast Harris and, but he'll be working as the, on the interim basis right now. And we'll get an answer on that and we'll make some contact with the TNP people also.
What about, they're going to block the covert off coming out of Hunter's Creek there, right?
Yes, and.
Is that simultaneous with the light or one of them happened before that happened?
Well, that is a maintenance project that they have. Unfortunately, there was a, they, they have a contractor that does all their maintenance projects of that nature in the area. And a couple of weeks ago, that company went belly up. And so when I heard that, we, I thought immediately, oh, great, we're going to be waiting here for a little while longer, so. They're look, they're working through a, a other alternative and hopefully they'll have something completed for us here in the near future.
Appreciate it.
So that area between twenty, between five twenty-eight and Leisure Lane, now with all the construction of the new businesses, that may be the most congested area of Friendswood. And we, I know that at our city council meeting before, we talked about, with our traffic study people, about pursuing with TechStop double turn lanes, which I think would help immensely at that intersection of five twenty-eight and five eighteen. Has there been any movement on that or?
There's been.
It was at the traffic, yeah.
We've had conversations with TechStop, but they have not adopted it as of yet. They, they want to do the other measures first, the energizing the signal at Leisure Lane and five eighteen, as well as making the slip turn movement at Hunter's Lane. Prohibitive of any cross-through traffic from Hunter's Lane to Chick-fil-A, but we will re-engage them and try to elevate the importance of the.
Especially since Mr. Tanos is going to be building another building there behind Jack and Fox and that area, there's going to even be more congestion and that would just be really helpful.
Since we're on the subject, I will mention that the low hanging fruit there is the optimization of signals throughout the city. So that, when, once we have them re-engaged, that'll be the, the first topic of conversation that we'll have with them because that's, that's the easiest thing to knock out. And according to the, the study, it would make an immediate impact to the level of service of what we're seeing here throughout town.
I've got, I've got one more, just a quick one.
Yes.
It's, could the speed limits being lowered from like, right there at five twenty-eight down to West Ranch? Could that affect anything with traffic or do we have control of those speed limits?
Well, we can, that's certainly something that we can engage TechStop to study. Ultimately, after a traffic study with them, they will have, they, if the, it is something that's necessary to be done, there would be a, an ordinance that would be brought to the city to, to lower a speed limit like that, but. We'll, we'll engage TechStop and ask them to put that on the radar.
Well, at least nobody will be able to complain that they were, that traffic light at Leisure Lane was a surprise because it's been there for six months and people. Maybe it's been there too long, when it comes on, people will just be used to blowing right past it, but. Yeah, like, could you just touch on the conduit work that's also going on up and down five eighteen, just so people are aware of what TechStop is also doing to install those?
Okay, so in addition to the, the sidewalk that is being replaced and the, um, traffic signals that will be installed, there is also conduit that is being installed. I noticed that there is a, a boring rig set up today and they've got a, another crew on a backhoe, a mini excavator also. They are installing electrical conduit. This conduit will eventually be used by the downtown, Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation project for a standardized lighting project throughout downtown. The, that, that's something that we're working with. The TechStop engineer to move that project along. That's something that we have to hope to have coming for you for acceptance for a, a project here within the next couple of months also.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Appreciate the update, Hill. Good job.
Thank you.
Item nine, city manager's report, present an update regarding the recent recognitions of the Parks and Recreation and Keep Friendswood Beautiful boards.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Recently, our Parks Department and our Keep Friendswood Beautiful Board were once again recognized by the Houston-Galveston Area Council. Our, the two projects that were highlighted in their awards program were the Ferry Trail, which as you know, has gotten a lot of recognition, a lot of praise over the last several months, as well as the Pollinator Garden that's out here in Stevenson Park, just behind the parking pad to the, to the right of City Hall as I'm sitting right now. Both projects were selected by the HGAC Natural Areas Award Planning Category and they will be formally recognized this February at an official ceremony then, but we applaud the efforts of both the Parks Department and Keep Friendswood Beautiful. They do yeoman's work to keep our city looking like it does and continuing to get the recognition that it does. It's not on the agenda, but it was mentioned earlier this evening during council comments related to Santa in the Park. I did want to mention that those festivities were held this past Saturday. We had over six thousand people in attendance, which is quite a record, especially for coming off the heels of COVID. It was an exceptional day of events that culminated in the Christmas tree lighting at the end of the night and some fireworks. And so, thank you all for the, that have made it out there this past Saturday and thanks to Parks Department, the Police Department and Public Works for all the work that they did this last weekend.
Thanks, Murad. Item ten, business items. A, discuss and take possible action on the appointment of Kelly Browning to Keep Friendswood Beautiful for a three-year term beginning immediately and ending November twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aaron Wirt, second by Councilmember Hanks. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item B, discuss and take possible action on the appointment of Cynthia Bowman to the Investment Committee to replace Larry Collison for a three-year term beginning November twenty twenty-one and ending November twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Grifon and Councilmember Scott, any questions or comments? All in favor? C, discuss and take possible action regarding approving a contract with Friendswood Historical Society in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the maintenance and preservation of historical sites in the city and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Second.
Councilmember Scott, Councilmember Branson, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item D, discuss and take possible action regarding approving a contract with ICS for the public safety software update.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanks, second in by Councilmember Rocky. Any questions? Murad Kabiri is ready to address if you have questions on ICS. We got this, got this briefing last month. I think everybody's understands it. All in favor? Good. Item E, discuss and take possible action approving the purchase of O three sixty-five to upgrade the office solution citywide. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sally Branson and John Scott, any question or comment? All in favor? Resolutions and ordinances, consideration of possible action regarding a proposed resolution casting the city of Friendswood's ballot for the election of a person to serve on the Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District. Votes are for the only candidate on the ballot, Mr. Mike Sullivan, who's currently serving in that regard.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Grifon, second by Councilmember Hanks. All in favor? Consider and possible action regarding a proposed resolution approving the agreement for the temporary closure of State Right of Way with the Texas Department of Transportation for the temporary closure of FM five eighteen for the Chamber of Commerce's holiday lighted parade and ratifying the city manager's signature on the agreement. Then we already have that parade.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. These ladies right here, all in favor?
Off the hook. Great.
You were sweating that one, weren't you?
Got your back.
Thank you.
That would've worked in most years, wouldn't it? Because normally, Santa in the Park is the second Saturday.
It is typically, yes.
And parks do a little curve ball, but we're ready for it, see? Easy. Consider and possible action on the second and final reading of a proposed ordinance regarding a requested zone reclassification change for eleven point nine two acres located at fifteen fifty West Boulevard, also known as Restricted Reserve A in the final plat of West Ranch School Site, a subdivision of twelve point oh seven acres of land located in the John Dickinson Survey A nine, also being a portion of lots one forty-eight through four fifty-two of the Sloan subdivision, as recorded under volume three, page sixty-one A, GCMR Galveston County, City of Friendswood, Texas, for a specific use permit to allow NAICS use six one 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 elementary and secondary schools for the new Klein Elementary School Site.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hanks and Branson.
Before y'all vote on it, in light of the comments that were made earlier this evening during public comments, for council's benefit, the sale of alcohol cannot take place within three hundred feet of the school site and that's measured from property line to property line. The rules differ for churches, but since Klein Elementary is being approved this evening for rezoning, the, any of those parcels at that intersection would not be allowed to sell alcohol.
Thank you.
They're within three hundred feet.
Correct.
Property line to property line, that's, that's the key here because churches is...
Front door to front door, as you would walk or stumble.
As you would walk, but three hundred feet, that's not very far when you're going from across the, basically across the street.
Yes.
So, all in favor? Consideration and possible action regarding the second and final reading of a proposed ordinance repealing in its entirety Appendix B subdivision ordinance and adopting a new Appendix B subdivision ordinance, sections one through sixteen, incorporating changes pursuant to state law and administrative requirements such as authority and a variance procedure, removing the sidewalk fund option and other grammatical and format changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Grifon, Councilmember Hanks, all in favor? Consideration and possible action regarding the second and final reading of a proposed ordinance repealing the two thousand eight future land use map and adopting a revised future land use map as part of the city of Friendswood comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Branson, all in favor? Consideration and possible action regarding the second and final reading of a proposed ordinance regarding a requested zone classification change for point eight six oh eight acres of land located at three oh one Laurel Drive, also known as one sixty-one West Shadow Bend, being lots one and two, block one, Banfield Office Park, a subdivision in Galveston County, Texas, according to the plat thereof, recorded under the county clerk's file sequence number two zero zero seven zero one five six four oh, in the map or plat records of Galveston County, Texas, to change from planned unit development specific use permit two thousand seven dash zero three to downtown district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Branson, Councilmember Rocky, all in favor? Okay, item G, consideration and possible action on the second and final reading of a proposed ordinance regarding a requested zone classification change for approximately three point seven two six eight acres located at three oh six South Friendswood Drive and three oh eight South Friendswood Drive, being one point six 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 acres of land known as Reserve A of Friendswood Complex, a subdivision in Galveston County, Texas, according to the map or plat thereof, in under instrument number two thousand sixteen zero three one seven two three of the official public records of Galveston County, Texas. Three oh six Laurel, AKA one sixty-one West Shadow Bend, and Vacant Track, AKA one fifty-one West Shadow Bend Avenue, being point eight six oh eight acres known as lots one and two of the final plat of Banfield Office Park, a subdivision in Galveston County, Texas, according to the plat thereof, recorded under the county clerk's file sequence number two zero zero seven zero one five six four oh, in the map or plat records of Galveston County, Texas, and three oh three Laurel being one point two acres known as part of lot eighteen and all of lot nineteen, Harvey and Stout subdivision of lot six, seven, eight, and block two of Friendswood subdivision in the Sarah McKissick of J.R. Williams League, Galveston County, Texas, according to the map or plat thereof, recorded in volume three fifteen, page seventy-nine, in the office of the county clerk of Galveston County, Texas, for a specific use permit to allow NAICS use seven two one 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 traveler accommodation limited to thirty rooms, supported by thirty-eight parking spaces that will overlay all of the described properties which are zoned downtown district.
Motion to approve.
No question what we're talking about there, is there, Mary Kay? I mean, that's as legal a description as you can get. Throw a few more words in there. So, Councilmember Branson, Councilmember Aaron Wirt, all in favor? Okay, consideration and possible action regarding the second and final reading of a proposed ordinance approving an amendment to ordinance number two thousand twelve dash zero four and two thousand sixteen dash four six to approve an annual rate adjustment for solid waste collection and disposal as provided for in the city of Friendswood Progressive Waste Solutions of Texas, Inc., DBA, WC of Texas, formerly known as IESI Texas Corporation Solid Waste Franchise, Waste Connections.
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Rocky, Councilmember Aaron Wirt, all in favor? Okay, consideration and possible action regarding the second and final reading of a proposed ordinance approving an amendment to Appendix D of the Code of Ordinances, City of Friendswood, Texas, to provide for the addition or adjustment of buildings and building regulation fees, utility service fees, library fees, parks and recreation facility fees, public information fees, and subdivision fees. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Branson, Councilmember Rocky, all in favor? Consideration and possible action regarding the first reading of a proposed ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Friendswood, Texas, Chapter thirty, Fire Protection and Prevention, Article four, fireworks, by amending Section thirty dash one four oh, general prohibition to make it unlawful for any person to host or permit others to use or set in action any fireworks at a location under his/her control.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanks, second by Councilmember Aaron Wirt. Any discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, can, can you guys explain why we want to do this, why we're making this change?
Sure. This past New Year's Eve, much like around the Fourth of July, we get quite a few complaints as folks illegally shooting off fireworks throughout the community. Recently, as it pertains to New Year's Eve, we had a number of citations that were issues that were dismissed because the, the folks that were firing off the, or sponsoring the fireworks display did not own the property, so they absolved themselves of any relationship associated with it. So, in order to help clarify and make sure that our ordinance is properly in place and that we have the ability to properly enforce it, we made some modifications to the ordinance.
I have a question here, Mo. The current code prohibits the sale and/or possession with the intent to sell, keep, use, discharge, cause to be discharged, ignite, detonate, fire, or otherwise use in action any fireworks or any description within the city. That's an individual responsibility. So, someone's firing off firework somewhere, that person is, is already against the code. He's already in violation of our code. That person can be cited regardless of where he's shooting that off. If, if, if he, if he doesn't own the land where he's shooting that firework off, that person could probably get upset with God for doing that, but the person who actually fired that firework off is in violation of our code. And then, when you say the proposed amendment expands the prohibit, prohibition, prohibition to those persons that allow and/or host said prohibited activities, allow, what if they don't allow it? What if they say, I don't allow it, but that person violated your code, why don't you go and write a citation? I talked to Brian earlier. I understand why we have the fireworks code, the OIS and, and our insurance purposes, but when I, the libertarian in me and the conservative in me, when I read what we're trying to put into this ordinance, it's a little bit, it shall be unlawful for any person to host or permit a person to possess. How do we know that that person is possessing something at all? Use or set in action any fireworks at a location under his or her control. What if I was at my home and I was asleep? That's my home and I did not allow or let anybody set in action the fireworks, but now I can have someone come to my home, it says personal residence, private property, or places of business or public place. This really is a little bit of an overreach for me. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, can I jump in on that same point? Kind of, when I read this, it says, you know, permit a person to possess or use et cetera under his or her control, and then it says it a residence or private property. So, if I'm in my backyard and my neighbor is shooting off fireworks, I could be cited under this because I failed to stop it and I was aware of it. And, and it was, you know, somebody else's private property, but I, I failed to stop it. You know, I, I, I think that this, I admire the concept and I, and I think, you know, there's something we can probably do here, but I, I think this wording is too broad and it's not clear exactly how it would be applied and I think it would, it would just be tossed again, if it happened again.
Well, I understand both of your concerns and I'll defer to Mary Kay as our city attorney, but the intent is not for either of you to be subject to the, the ordinance. If someone, if your neighbor were to fire it off on their property, you're not liable for them doing that. And if someone were to trespass on your property and fire off fireworks without your consent or permission, you're not liable for it.
But it doesn't say that. It doesn't specifically say that.
And it expressly disclaims the fact that this, this might be unconstitutional and wherever it is found unconstitutional, everything else is gonna stand. Well, that automatically forces that person to have to push the constitutionality of this ordinance, instead of us really being careful with our language and saying, how, how do we, how, how do we, right now, it's, the, the ordinance is, you're a personal person. If you are violating our ordinance, you are gonna be cited. Now, you're bringing other people's premises and properties and, and possibly making them in violation of something that they did not allow. I have absolutely been at my house asleep and some people shot some fireworks off at my house. I didn't allow it, but they were kids and they did it.
No, and that's definitely understandable and if we need to go clean up the ordinance, we, we very well can. The scenario in question is if, if you, as Robert Grifon, owner of the property, or even not owner of the property, you hire somebody to fire off fireworks on your property. Technically, you're not in possession of it, but you're the one that should be liable for it if you hire somebody to come do that on your premise. And the way the current ordinance is written, we cannot cite you, even though if you, as Robert Grifon, hire somebody to come onto your property and fire fireworks off. So, that was the intent for the ordinance, but...
So, you're saying I could hire someone to come onto my property in Friendswood, in the city, under the current ordinance, and I would be fine to shoot off fireworks?
Correct. Because you're not technically in possession. So...
But you could take the person that I hired and cite them for it.
Correct.
And then they would be responsible for coming in there and shooting off fireworks on my property, but I'd be fine.
You would be fine as it's currently written. That was the intent. Now, if we haven't achieved that, and again, I deferred to Mary Kay, but I interrupted, so...
The main, the main goal is just probably to get people to stop shooting fireworks and to be more, I guess that's where we're going after here, right?
Correct. We had, not, we as in the city of Friendswood, but just this past Fourth of July...
Yeah, it's gotten bad, it's gotten bad over the past few years.
NHL hockey player that killed, died, attending a party that fireworks were set off in her backyard that was shot right into his chest.
And it lowers our insurance premiums. Make no, Brian completely explained that to me and I really do appreciate that earlier, Brian. It lowers our insurance rates and it's extremely important.
Correct.
So, I, I appreciate all these questions because maybe I was reading it wrong, but when I read this, I was focused on the verbs, to host or permit a person to, and then all the other things, even though there were, there were some, there was a comma, to possess, use, or set in action, et cetera. So, I assumed it all went back to the person to host or permit.
Correct.
So, you're, you're hosting or you're permitting these things on your property. So, like that example that Robert gave of, I may be asleep and didn't get permission, would not be applicable to this, correct? I mean, that's how I read it.
Obviously, if that's the person, it's having to be in property.
But you have to permit to, or permit or host. You have to host or permit.
How do you define permit? If you, if you are...
You give them permission.
No, but what if you just tacitly are, are allowing it, but you're not, maybe didn't say, yeah, you can go shoot for fireworks, but you're sitting in your yard watching them, but you never get permission.
Well, I think if you're sitting in your yard watching them, you've given them permission. I would say that.
And property under...
Just like underage drinking in your yard.
And property under your control.
Yeah.
So, my property's under my control, but they went and blew off fireworks, but...
Without your permission. You didn't host that fireworks display. That's how I've read it anyway. I don't know if that was accurate, but that's what...
Mary Kay?
Well, I think the incident that brought this up was a business owner that was watching people shoot fireworks on his property and under the ordinance, he couldn't be cited. And the intent was, and there may be other examples that Brian and his staff have come across that, that they wanted us to try and make the ordinance a little more broad. And this was the attempt to... and this was the attempt to satisfy that goal. The intent of the ordinance is to whoever you allow or give permission to or basically don't stop. I think you can cite people. I don't know how successful they'll be as far as court is concerned because that is a big issue. You know, somebody could argue, "I didn't know, I had no intention of allowing him." So, there's one issue is can we cite him? The other issue is can we prove it up? We're going to have to have the evidence to prove it up. And with regard to constitutionality, that phrase, that provision is in all of our ordinances. Just in case there's something in the ordinance that's proved unconstitutional, it basically saves the rest of it, that's fine. So, I just wanted to point that point out.
If we were at 24-hour fitness, and there's a lot of businesses using the same parking lot as 24-hour business, at 24-hour fitness, and I don't even know if they're in business still anymore, but just for an example, you know where that is. Someone starts shooting off fireworks in that parking lot, our police are going to go and get them, and they're going to cite them for this violation. And the home, the business owners, they didn't permit it or allow it, but under this, we could say, "Well, maybe the businesses were tacitly approving of it because their businesses are located on the parking lot."
We would have to prove, though, that they tacitly approved it. So, either a written agreement or a verbal agreement for them to do it. In that particular example, if New Quest Properties, which owns that shopping center, said, "No, I did not authorize the firing of fireworks," they're not liable.
And hopefully, whenever the incident is investigated and somebody's shooting fireworks, they'll at least speak with them and see if they can get the information from them in order to link them to the property owners. That would be helpful also, but it's, you know, it's going to have to be proven in court.
But what if it's, in Robert's example, what if the owner of a business was perfectly fine with it but didn't own the parking lot?
And as the way it's written currently, it's not a citable offense, and so it'd be dismissed. But the proposed language, if they're perfectly okay with it and are allowing it to take place, they would be liable.
But it's not their property. It's a parking lot that they don't own.
Correct, but well...
They're hosting.
They're still hosting the event. They're still hosting the fireworks. If you want to take Abaneros, for example, that's in that same New Quest Shopping Center, if they're the only business that are open and they're hosting the fireworks at Stravaganza, and every other business is closed, they're the ones that technically should be liable, even though the other, they don't own the property. If they're knowingly encouraging someone to come in and potentially create a hazardous situation. That's the intent here. Now, if we need to modify the ordinance, we definitely can to make sure that we...
"It shall be unlawful for any person to host or permit a person to possess." Now, that puts me in a position where I have to know if that person is possessing.
Right, you have to give them permission.
Permit a person to possess. So, what if I didn't permit the person to possess, but they possessed it on the property anyway?
Then you're not liable. Again, if you're, in this equation, if you're not giving tacit approval verbally, written, or otherwise, it's no different from people putting political signs on your property. They have to get your permission. If they don't get your permission, they can't put the sign there. Does it keep people putting signs on your property? No, it doesn't, but then you have an obligation as a property owner to go out and remedy the situation to the best of your ability.
So, as long as I don't give them permission in writing or something like that, I can sit back and watch them shoot off fireworks, and this law can't do it, new law can't do anything about it.
If you're sitting back watching them, then you're giving permission. It's like anybody's...
I thought you said, you know, specific approval. I mean, just sitting there and watching, is that approval?
If you're allowing folks to do something knowingly illegal on your property, it's illegal, just as it is with drugs, if you allow...
But again, we're saying it's not your property, it's the neighbor's or it's the park's.
Then you're not liable. If you don't own the property and you're not giving permission to do it, then you're not liable.
So, if you're sitting in the 24-hour fitness and you're not saying a word, but you're enjoying the fireworks show and you don't own the parking lot, this can't do anything to you.
No, but if you own the business that's hosting the fireworks at Stravaganza, you would be liable for this.
And you're just quiet and not saying anything. If you're just ignoring it, you know, if you're not giving them approval, any kind of approval, then you can't be cited under this.
Well, I'm fairly certain that every single person that I know in the City of Friendswood knows that it's illegal to shoot fireworks.
Correct.
Period. So, I don't know that we need to keep rewriting law or changing law or anything else. It's illegal to do it. Laws are never going to keep people from doing things that are openly violating what they know to be wrong. I don't know why we're going through it. Just leave it alone.
Well, okay, so, but I thought we were going through it because someone hosted a fireworks display and got around the law because I didn't, they didn't own the parking lot, but they hosted the fireworks display. So, yes, they're hosting something that's illegal, but I'm doing it on property that I don't own, so I'm okay?
So, you're making the assumption that they specifically took the law, read the law, and said, "You know what? Because I don't own the property, I can do it without getting charged."
I'm just saying.
I think that's a stretch.
If that was their...
I think that's a very, very big stretch.
But Trish, in your example, they could have gone in and cited every single person shooting off fireworks.
And maybe they did, I don't know. And maybe they did.
And that's pretty tame.
I think that's already written in the law.
All right, I'm going to cut off the discussion here. Everybody has had their chance to speak at least twice. There's a lot of fireworks going on up here.
I would, and Mayor, if you give me one minute, and I would, much to the chagrin of our fire marshal, if we have an ordinance that's on the books that it's not enforceable, I'd rather just do away with it altogether. Because what it does, we get hundreds of calls, New Year's Eve, hundreds of calls, Fourth of July, and that's a large expenditure of resources to send folks around town trying to issue citations and chase phantom fireworks. If we can't enforce it and are not going to enforce it, I would encourage it to be removed from the books.
Well, I think we want to enforce the fact that we can't fire fireworks, and I think this rewrite closes a little bit more of the loop on some infractions. So, I am here to support this ordinance, but I'm hearing from my cohorts up here that we may be asking for a rewrite or just to pull it and stick with what we have. I, nobody up here is saying, "Hey, let's not enforce the no fireworks."
It's not enforceable, right?
Well, we want to keep it.
They're like right on the edge of the street. Not enforceable.
Well, we, that, yeah, that... Yeah, we have laws that aren't enforceable, but people know, like John said, everybody in Friendswood knows you can't own fireworks, you can't set off fireworks. And we want it that way. We want people to know that because we want, we want to have an ordinance on the book. Uh-oh.
And it helps our insurance. It helps our premiums.
The Patriot, the Patriot AAA.
So, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Yeah, but the big thing is, when cases get dismissed, we get feedback from the prosecutors. The prosecutors tell us what the problem is with the ordinance, and we go back, as we did in this case, because there were a couple of incidents that occurred. And it really makes no difference to the police department whether or not we have fireworks, legal or illegal, but don't send anybody out there to enforce it if it's not enforceable in the court. I mean, that's just a liability.
Well, in most cases, they are enforceable, and we do get fines, you know, set by the judge.
Well, it's, exactly.
Not all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
I defer to our city attorney. No, sir, I'm not, I'm not recognizing anybody in the gallery. No, sir.
If council would like, can you table the, if you could table the matter, we can definitely bring the...
Okay. I'll make a motion, we table this.
Second.
A motion and a second to table, all in favor? Opposed? Table, table. Consideration and possible action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding the street name change of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard to Friendswood Parkway to include the existing thoroughfare from FM 528 West Parkwood Avenue to the League City and Friendswood City Limit and the future thoroughfare planned from FM 528 West Parkwood Avenue to Pearland and Friendswood City Limit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Councilmember Scott, all in favor? Please.
Oh, okay.
Seven, nothing, okay.
Just don't shoot fireworks off of them.
Consideration and possible action regarding the first and final reading of a proposed ordinance amending City of Friendswood, Texas, Ordinance Number 2021-22, passed and approved September 13, 2021, same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 by approving Budget Amendment 3 to the original general budget of the City of Friendswood, Texas, for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds, providing for severability, and providing other matters related to the subject.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor? Consideration and possible action regarding the first and final reading of a proposed ordinance amending the City of Friendswood, Texas, Ordinance Number 2020-35, passed and approved September 14, 2020, same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 by approving Budget Amendment 12, the original general budget of the City of Friendswood, Texas, for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, providing for the supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds, providing for severability, and providing other matters related to the subject.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Easy. We are adjourned.